We need a motion for approval of the agenda. May it move second? Jeff, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight to zero. Joe?
So, we're very excited this evening to continue our Board of Education Spotlight with by highlighting a few educators within our district. First, on behalf of the Board of Education and administration, we'd like to honor members this evening who have found ways to embrace technology within their classrooms or settings to ultimately impact positive experiences for our students. First, we're going to go ahead and introduce Lisa Sealy, who is a teacher at Reynolds Elementary School. And she was recognized as a Featured Teacher of the Month for December by the Central New York Regional Information Center, or CINIC, for use of technology within her classroom. Lisa has integrated physical hardware and digital applications to transform learning. One specific piece of technology Lisa uses is the Garmin VRB 360 camera, which records students working together during collaboration stations specifically in math exercises. And anytime you can introduce technology into mathematics, that's a good thing. That collaboration station features a table comprised of about five students who work as partners or as a group to solve various math problems. Throughout this process, students use math and communication to work through the task with their peers. Students then explain why they solved the problem the way that they did, use accountable talk, and use language to solidify their understanding. Students are getting that opportunity to see what the same problem can be solved in various ways, and they're calling upon multiple skills in order to arrive at that answer. So, congratulations, Lisa, on behalf of the district for bringing exemplary use of technology into your classroom. Congratulations. Next, we're excited to bring two educators up. We have Lindsay Cesari, our school library media specialist at Dirkie Junior High School, and Tom Liggett, who is one of our LAN techs, working in district technology. And we're excited because they have brought esports to our school here, specifically with a club at Dirkie Junior High School, which also involves students at Baker High School. And we're currently in the works of looking at how we can make this a reality for students within our regular instructional program here during the school day. So, some highlights. Lindsay has had a very persistent library volunteer this last year, started esports in several requests. She worked with those students, and she recruited the help of Tom, as I mentioned, who works in the technology field here as a LAN tech, and he was the right person for that job. Esports is, at its most basic, is video games played competitively. Dirkie's inaugural season kicked off at the beginning of this school year. The fall season wrapped up with six students making it to the playoffs in the National High School Esports League. For seventy-six percent of the students who were part of the fall team, this was the first time they've been a part of a Beeville team, and fifty-four percent of that team does not participate in any other extracurricular activity. And this is important to note because, as you know, students that are connected with some type of extracurricular or school-related activity, they're more likely to be here, and they're more likely to perform at higher levels within the classroom. So, we thank Lindsay and Tom for their efforts in getting this esports team created here in the district, and the student persistence as well. And we look forward to what the spring term will be for these students, and hopefully we'll continue to grow this program. So, congratulations on behalf of the district, Lindsay and Tom, for their innovation.
Yeah, I hope you got my name straight this week. Meetings held Instructional Technology Budget Committee. I'll be joining Jamie on that.
So, the Curriculum Instruction Team and Tiffany had our first, well, actually, two instructional budget meetings. And I will say that this was the first year out of all the years that I've done it where we've had really intense questions and conversation from the public, so that's a good thing. A lot of the complications that I thought were created by the budget really were a result of ESSA and the fact that we now have so many more budget lines. So, it's still, you know, an issue with us trying to get comfortable in explaining the work. But the folks that came to the committee brought, you know, experience from the private sector, and so it was interesting for me to see the differences with suggestions that they were bringing to the education setting. So, we finished up last week, I know that's on there as well, and moved forward with, you'll see, the first meeting in March where we present our budget.
Thanks. Joint PTA Officers Meeting.
So, that was a positive experience, again, too, with the community groups. We shared, their next meeting will actually be in April, and that will be held in the new transportation facility. So, we're going to, you know, have that, an experience for those officers to experience with that new facility.
Coffee and Conversation.
I attended the coffee conversation. This, this one was, hopefully I don't forget anybody, but so is the SRO Program, Special Education, Mental Health, and Human Resources. So, you know, like, like what I believe most, it's, you know, there's, there's a handful of people from the community there to hear, but I think it's important regardless of the number to get out there and offer these. So, it was very well presented, very well received. There were actually comments from, from one of the community members about how much they appreciate what we do here, based on her experience in some other districts. So, very positive feedback from that.
Instructional Technology Budget Committee Meeting.
I double them up, yeah.
Okay. Board of Handbook Committee.
We're working on it. Matt Jaeger did a nice job getting some text in there for us to work from, and we've been inserting things, talking about the different sections, making sure it's as clear as possible from the perspective of someone coming in and knowing nothing about the operation. We've been pulling a lot of things from policy and our calendar year to kind of lay it out and insert some things. Right now, there are some sections around hold with, one of them being the committees. We need to discuss as a board what to do with those and how to fill in that section, what we want to do going forward. We're just finishing, or actually, we started, we finished up the financial accountability piece of our job. We're about to start the academic accountability piece, and I'm currently pulling sections or policies to help us fill in that section. I've made some more comments for those on the committee who could look at the Google Doc, and we also probably need to schedule another meeting. I thought the last one was really productive, us all kind of contributing beforehand and then going through all those comments together and discussing some things. If we can do that again, maybe Beth can send out, yeah, doodle thing.
Yeah. Okay, half-day for Students Professional Development Day.
Last Friday, we had our staff development. It was a building-level staff development. I know Derek was presenting at the high school, and each of the building principals worked with their groups, so there was a variety of topics, and it was a productive day for our staff.
Audit Committee Meeting. So, Jamie, you can report, or Jen, or Brian? I always say they make the big bucks, they can report.
Well, we discussed four different, we discussed our risk audit by our internal auditors, and we also gave them a couple areas to go work on the rest of this year, which is going to be inventory and some of the other, how we manage AP, the cash, cash receipts. We talked with our claims auditor about some issues, not necessarily issues, we just reviewed her report from last month, but we also discussed about issues with the increased use of the credit card, which is causing some issues. So, we have some administrative regulations to develop about those things and publish in the district. And then we went over our ECA audit and our single audit, both of which were pretty, there were no findings at all. A single audit, a single audit is all our federal funds, about $2.6 million a year comes into the district from federal funds. That includes IDA, which is special ed monies, and Title I, Title II. Most of that money is used for people, teaching assistants, reading teachers, those kinds of things. Joe has some part of that with PD, and then Brian Wright has about $780,000 comes into his, his operation through the Federal Nutrition Program. So, that's what makes it up, but good audits on that because the people manage it, and our accountant does a nice job of keeping track of it, so it's nice. This is like the fifth year in a row we've had no comments in that audit. ECA, we had a couple minor comments, but remember, there's probably fifty clubs, two-hundred-and-fifty people handling those books. Always an adventure every year to see how that's going to end up at the end. But I will say, our advisors and our students take it seriously, and they, by and large, they really do a nice job. So, that's, okay.
Thank you, Jamie. And last but not least, Board of Education Cabinet Spaghetti Dinner with Van Buren fifth graders, which I think is a highlight for all of us every year. We, the fifth grade staff puts on the spaghetti dinner. Anybody else want to comment on it?
I was, yeah, I was just going to say, it was my first dinner, and it was absolutely lovely. We had some great conversations with the kids, and they offered us some ideas going forward. My favorite was a large room with teddy bears. They're stuffed animals, so it was lovely.
I actually spent more time talking to them about what to expect next year. They kept asking lots of questions about sixth grade and Ray, so unlike years past, instead of talking about the current building, they would actually talk more about what to expect next year. So, they were curious about all the changes next year, and when I mentioned ski club, they actually talked about, well, why can't we have ski club in fifth grade? So, I mentioned it to Cindy on the way out, and she wasn't opposed to it, so there might be some logistics there, but it was, I thought it was a good question. Why don't we have it in fifth grade? So, anyway, I had a good group, but they're very excited to get to Ray next year.
They are, they are excited. Anyone else?
Yeah, Joan, there was a couple things I wanted to mention. I'm sure this was talked about at the last meeting, but I wasn't here. Gene and I, and John and Carolyn Vanwee had the privilege of going to the Rose Bowl Parade. And to see that Baldwinsville, see that Baldwinsville banner coming down Colorado Avenue was just great. The kids did super, and they certainly weren't the biggest band out there. I think maybe Wisconsin was the biggest band, but they did a terrific job. We were very proud. We tried to get everybody in our group cheering them on, and hopefully some of them heard us yelling, or Casey did anyway, I don't know. So, that was a really terrific experience. And then later on, we had the experience of visiting an elementary school in the rainforest of Panama. And these kids are required to go to school K through six. And then to go secondary school, they have to get in a boat and go across, down a river and across a lake and into town, and it's quite a chore for them. So, when I see what we have available, what we've talked about with technology and everything, their school was about sixty by thirty feet with a hole in the floor, plywood tacked up, two whiteboards, a few desks and chairs, and that was it. That's what they had to work with, no electricity. And, you know, we always want more, we want better technology and so on, and that's great, we should have it. But when you think of what some third-world nations or parts of third-world nations have to deal with, it's, it's mind-boggling that they do as well as they do. And the last thing I just wanted to mention, I don't mean to slight the girls, but we've been to two of the boys' basketball games, and if you haven't caught one of their games yet, they're amazing, just an amazing team. And it's not just a one-man show, they're all good. And I'd really recommend it, they got two more home games, and it's, you're up so close to the action where you hear all the sneakers squeaking and everything. It's not like you're up in the nosebleeds, nosebleed seats at the Dome. So, those are the three things I wanted to mention. And I do have the program from the Rose Bowl Parade, so Jamie, you didn't pass one around, did you? So, I'm going to start it down here, and we'll just send it around, everybody take a look at it. It's kind of beat up because I mailed it home with a bunch of pine cones, so.
I'll piggyback off that. I've been to some of those games, too, and the team play with the boys' team has just been phenomenal to watch. And I've been to a number of games, including the one in the middle of the day during winter break, and it's standing room only in there. And it, there's generating a lot of excitement, and I'm hoping to get to a girls' game as well. I'm trying as hard with the boys', my own boys' schedules. But, you know, when the pep band is there, I mean, the place is just, you just feel so much energy and incredible school spirit there, and just so much pride. So, it's, I highly recommend if you have a chance and you haven't yet to see them play in home, it is awesome.
I'll have to try that because it's the way it used to be, and it seems good to see it come back.
And also, we had a Wellness Committee meeting as well since the last board meeting, and some of it Jamie already covered, talking about the cafeteria at Baker, so I won't review that. But one of the things, we have an opportunity to get a grant in partnership with the Anadaga County Health Department, is for a significant amount of money. We qualified, they did it with Syracuse last year, we qualified. It's a community, it's really a community grant through Van Buren, but it also, the school that those children go to benefit from it as well. And some of the things that they've been able to do in Syracuse, a lot of professional development, a lot of grab-and-go food, more nutritious choices for the kids. They've been able to do climbing wall yoga mats and everything. I'm not sure what will happen, but they're working with Becky Schultz through the Anadaga County Health Department, and the grant deadline is February 4th, so we'll see if we get that because I think Brian Wright already has a good chunk of it spent with an IDA Dirkie, which is pretty cool. Yeah, so we'll wait to see on that.
Okay, thanks. Moving, Student Board Report. Jordan.
There we go. Okay. So, something that is coming up, we have the robotics tournament will be on the February 8th, 2020. So, every year, our robotics team will host a competition with other schools to compete with their robots, which is going to be coming up. In the past, we had the Red Finger Campaign this week. The Red Finger Campaign, if you aren't familiar, is when we have students paint their thumb red to help prevent distracted driving. So, the hope is that students, when they're in the car and they're driving, they see the red thumb, they avoid using any distractions. So, a lot of kids participated in this. We had the opportunity for kids to paint their finger in lunch, and we had a video, and I think it really helped because distracted driving is a huge thing for this generation, and it'll help save a lot of people. Also, we just had our Wellness Day and pep rally. So, every year, we do have our Wellness Day. We had some similar activities than last year, and also some new ones. For example, we had African drum circles, sushi making, rock painting, improv and balloon animals, among many, many others. And I think Wellness Day should always stay in the school, everyone really loves it. Some kids think it's an easy way to skip the school that day, but I really like to see everybody come. Also, we just started having a second and third pep rally in a year to help feature other sports. So, we just had our first-ever winter pep rally where we focused on, like, basketball and the musical and all other activities going on during the winter season. And the pep rally is so energetic, everybody's involved, and the pep band does an amazing job playing during the pep rally for everyone to hear. It was absolutely amazing. So, that's pretty much everything that's happened since we last met. Robotics is pretty much the only thing coming up so far. The third marking period just started, and everyone's excited, it's going to go fast.
It's, it's good to see everything that's going on up there, too. Moving on to, request to speak, Jamie?
There are no requests to speak.
Approval of Consent Agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim's, Jim and Jeff, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight to zero. Leadership Report.
So, for the, our Leadership Report, we're going to have a report out on the Diversity and Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee that we've put together. We started this committee at the, towards the end of last school year, and in starting this committee, we asked to have Derek Dorsey come and help facilitate this committee for us. Derek comes to us with just a plethora of experience and knowledge in really facilitating dialogue and supporting, you know, diversity, equity, and inclusion just throughout the community and bringing into the school districts. And he's done a lot of work with our, our district over the years of staff trainings and support. So, what we'll do is just have Derek come up and, and kind of present a little bit about what the committee's done.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much to Dave and his staff for asking me to come in, to the Diversity and Inclusion Team for giving me permission to present this evening in front of you, to give you an update as to what we've accomplished already and some of the things that are on the horizon for the Diversity and Inclusion Team. A little bit of my backstory is I am currently a board member for the Syracuse City School District. I served for president for three years, vice president for one year, and currently, I'm a board member, but still a valued board member. For eight years, I was the Director of Community-Wide Dialogue to End Racism. I don't know if you're familiar with that program, but one of the, one of the unique pieces of that program is bringing together city and suburb schools to begin to break down stereotypes and white privilege, how to become an ally, and things of that nature. I trained folks at Syracuse University in the dorms to actually move this work forward and really create an environment of inclusion, knowing that they have students that attend the university from all over the world. So, in doing that powerful work, I've been asked to do some work here with the district by the superintendent. And one of the things that I, I did was Friday that was brought up was a presentation at the high school for all the staff, a professional learning opportunity for them to begin to look at equity versus equality. You know, equity, everyone gets a pair of shoes that fits. Equality, everyone just gets a pair of shoes. Really looking at diversity and inclusion, diversity being you get invited to the party, and inclusion is you're being asked to dance while you're at the party. So, we were trying to move some powerful work forward here in the district with the support of not only a cross-section of folks of, that's behind me, there's even, there's several in the room this evening, but some students as well, and also some board members that, that sit as a part of this, this, this mission for the district with the change in demographic of the students that are part of the, of the Baldwinsville District. And it's, it's, it's a huge value for me personally to be asked to the table to support it. So, this that I, the work that I did with the high school was something that I did for free. I actually did entire professional development piece with TJ here in this building as well. Because I believe in the work, I didn't charge for that either. I think that you need to be proud of your district. And what do I mean by that? This is courageous work that you're doing, to notice that things are changing. Socioeconomic status, there's a huge differential. There's people that are entering into the district with different races and ethnicities and even gender identities, which we didn't think about years ago, right? How do you create a bathroom for folks that identify as being transgender? As board members, I realize that challenge. But this is courageous work, so I just wanted to applaud you on that. So, what are we doing? We met for five sessions. We had an orientation to talk about what's the goal, what's the roadmap, what does it look like? We had our first session really just beginning to look at self-awareness, where the, do all of my social identities connect? We did some group development work on our second session. Our third session, we looked at goal-setting, and we looked at the SMART goals, making sure that the goals that we were setting as a group were specific, measurable, attainable, relative, and timely. We also looked at our mission statement for our fourth session. Now, you all can imagine how difficult it is to have twenty to twenty-five folks attending on a regular basis to come up with a mission statement. They say sometimes you get ten people in a room and you have eleven opinions, right? So, you can imagine how difficult it is for us to come up with one. So, we came up with five. Then we condensed it down to what you see here. We look at it as a living, breathing document. We're, we're going to tweak it again. It's going to evolve as we evolve. What we're looking at on the horizon is short-term goals, long-term goals for the district. Through our mission statement, I like to say, everything that we do as a group will be through the lattice of the, the mission statement. Dave and his folks have identified the liaison for the district, and Jen is going to take on that role. So, we have someone that's in the district to begin to help build the internal capacity for you guys to take over the work. When we first entered into this relationship as consultant in district, the superintendent thought that we, we would be able to get through this in five, four or five sessions, and that hasn't been the case. But that's not to say that's a bad thing, it's just that folks need to be equipped with the language, confident with the language, confident and clear with the mission and the vision of what we're trying to accomplish. And then, I'm, I'm here to support. I didn't want to step away, didn't want to step down. We did commit for, for four sessions, maybe five, but, and we've already met five times, but there's no way that I would not want to continue to do this work because the passion is in the work and seeing the change. So, I'm here to support, and will continue to support moving forward. So, I would like to thank those that are behind me that are a part of the Diversity and Inclusion Team. I would like to thank the board members that are a part of the Diversity and Inclusion Team. We value your perspective, we value the student perspective, we value the educator's perspective, the administrator's perspective. Just so you know, one of the things, well, there's actually four- Just so you know, one of the things, well, there's actually four things that we're looking at right now. Policy is one that a group, the subgroup that we have set up, and it wouldn't be to make policy, that's your role. It would be to make recommendations about some things that we need to look at and they would bring that information back to the body. But we are looking at student-to-student relationships, teacher-to-teacher relationships, the school community and the greater community. We have an opportunity to exhibit the change that we would like to see in the community in which we reside. Another reason why I would like to applaud you is that because of the board members being at the table and the students being at the table, this is a very unique approach. We're looking at top-down and bottom-up and meeting somewhere in the middle instead of just taking something and pushing it down, which seems to be like the corporate way, right? These ideas come from the top and we're just gonna make you do it. We're incorporating the student and the student voice. And it's great to see that a student actually sits on your board for that board perspective. I think that's very powerful, something I'm gonna take back to the group. They say if you want to make the decisions in an elementary, you walk around on your knees, right? So, you see their perspective. And to actually have a student voice and a student perspective at the table, it's powerful because I'm all about inclusion and not silencing and allowing people to have a voice in the process. So, at this time, I know that was extremely high-level, but I will like to take some questions. Please be kind. It is my birthday, all right? And I'm going to leave here and go break bread with the family right after the presentation. But I would like to take any questions you may have regarding the Diversity and Inclusion Team, yes?
Well, happy birthday and thank you for sharing it with us. And thank you for the work you're doing. I really appreciate the work of the committee and I hope we're having difficult conversations because that's the only way we're gonna really dig deep and find out, you know, what the solutions are. Because this is a living, breathing document, I wonder if I can endeavor to encourage the committee not to limit us to physical abilities, to think about those people among us, particularly students, who have different abilities because of their intellectual capacity or their learning differences. These are the folks that are often, not only are they not invited to the party, if they are invited to the party, they're definitely not asked to dance. So, I just hope we can maybe think about that at some point.
That's very perceptive of you. One of the things that we had before we started tweaking was, it was really long. And one of the things that we're talking about in the mission statement, this was before that edit went up, we were looking at regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, age, physical abilities, religious belief, political beliefs and other ideologies provide an opportunity for all to enhance their knowledge, recognize their value and grow to reach their full potential. And one of the things that we did even in the exercise on Friday, the social wills, is it begins to look at all those different pieces that intersect and make up your social location, right? And one of them is your physical ability, your mental ability. So, it says, are you physically able, are you mentally able? And there's different learning styles, there's everything. But what we're trying to really create is an opportunity to build up that equity, that empathy lens, pardon me, the empathy lens. And that is to understand that not everyone has the same capacities. Some people learn differently. Some people, when they see a sign, one of those blue signs, they look for that in locations, right? Because their day is set around where those blue signs are, right? And we need to look at that as well. So, you want to make sure that you're teaching each and every student in the class instead of just teaching the class.
Quick question?
Sure.
Thanks for all your work for being here. Where will this reside? Where will we house this to make sure it's available for people? Do you know that?
The beginning of, I missed the beginning of your question, I'm sorry.
Where will this reside? Will it be, how will we communicate with this district and where do we, is it go on our website? Is there, how do we communicate it to the general public?
So, that's a good question. Once, I think we have it on, Joe, for the board to adopt this as our mission. And then like we said, it's a living, breathing document that we'll continue to tweak, but we'd like to have it posted on our website and we'll work with Sarah Buckshot to, you know, get this out to the community as well. But...
No, I think it's great. I just want to make sure we get full benefit out of it so that people know about it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't want to jump in too much, but Derek, you know, has brought a great perspective to the committee. And the one thing, and Christie has made some excellent, you know, points, the one thing I can say about being in the committee and doing the work has been that it's very eye-opening because the more people that we have at the table, the more perspectives we have and it's eye-opening. So, as we move forward with the committee, the one thing we're gonna do moving on from today is open it back up to invite more people to sit on the committee and we'll continue to do the work. But I think we need to have more perspectives at the table, more communication because unless you've had those experiences or can bring that to the table, we're not having those discussions, right? So, that's been the one great thing about having students at the table, community members, all the different, you know, stakeholders, is that they're bringing perspectives that not everyone has had or experiences and they're bringing those to the table for people to have discussions about and, you know, create some understanding around that. So, that's why I think we're gonna be moving forward in the future.
And also, we did an exercise and activity not only on Friday, but as the DNI team of setting those short-term goals within thinking of moving from dialogue to action. So, we're not just sitting around the table having some difficult conversations about what's going on, but also coming up with some strategies of how we're gonna get there, right? How we're gonna make that change in the community, in the school community and then in the community at large, yeah.
I just, I don't have a question.
Yes, Professor.
But I just want to, you thank a lot of people. I want to especially thank you. This is very difficult to do and sitting in the room, these are not easy conversations just like you mentioned. And as much as we want to proceed with this work without having you bring your expertise and you to take your time to help guide us through this process and not enforce on us what you think, but to allow us to explore what we have inside, I don't think we would have gotten nearly as much done as we did. So, thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
This is also Judge Roberts' birthday and you're both having such fun things to do scheduled on your birthday. You know, to go back to what Christie said, and in here you mentioned physical abilities, but there is nothing in here about academic abilities. I don't know the best way to word it. I don't like saying mental abilities, but there is nothing about that on the list. And I think that we really do want to include all students of all academic abilities or whatever direction they choose to go with their learning. And I think that's an important thing to include and it's not really in there.
Yep. Point taken. And we wanted to speak to a clear mission that we have in front of us and it's point taken. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'm looking at the mission statement and looking how we can word that because I know it was discussed.
Yep.
It was discussed to extent that metaphysical, emotional disabilities would all be inclusive in there and I think that probably, like you said, we'll be tweaking it. And it definitely should be in there. That's somewhere along with the list. It should be physical, not only emotional abilities. So, I think maybe we need to tweak it a little bit more.
Will do.
It may be as simple as just taking out the word "physical," it's "abilities."
Yes. I don't know what, we have that until approved tonight, correct? Yeah. Maybe we should make an amendment there just to think abilities. We'll see what happens when it comes along. And you'll find out from us what happened.
Well, I want to still be a part of making the sausage and doing the hard work and then coming up with something that works out best. So, I'm not going to abandon ship. I want to be around as long as you need me so we could lay a solid foundation so we can go really high with this.
Yep. Sounds good. Any other questions? Thanks a lot, Derek.
I would like to yield the rest of my time to Beth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Derek.
May budget vote, paper ballots. Okay, because of the two elections that we have, the primaries, we're not gonna be able, probably, the good chance, Onondahico County schools will not have access to voting machines, the electronic ones, for our May budget vote. So, they're gonna sequester the ones from April's vote and then they have to get ready for the vote in June and of course, May's in the middle. So, the counties around us, so Kewa County, Cortland County, Madison County have told those schools, you're definitely not getting them. There is a good chance that we won't have it here either. So, tomorrow Tiffany and I have a conference call with a couple of lawyers from Farrar to come up with what the rules are. So, what I'm suggesting we do is we use the paper ballots we've used all along. You know, the last five years, we've used those paper ballots. The voters are used to seeing the format, you know, where they have the budget resolutions on one side and all the people running on the other. My feeling was that, and we talked about this among the business officials last week as well and the whole county, if the county will print the ballots for us, we use that that's one less thing that's kind of unknown with the voters. And then the only thing that's really, if it truly happens, it's, we're not gonna get the results of the vote that evening. If we have 2,000 voters voting on both sides of a piece of paper, there's rules that you have to do to add them up together that's specific to ed law, we're gonna find all this out tomorrow. So, once we figure out what it is, we'll put a synopsis together for everybody and put it in the Friday Letter. But just so you know, there could be a wrinkle. I think we got a plan for the worst. If we end up getting one machine, we could still use paper ballots if the machine dies. Five years ago, we did have some boxes made to put ballots in because we weren't really sure how well they were gonna work as they were introducing it all at once in the whole state. But it has become pretty convenient and people are used to it. It is interesting that, you know, when they put this in law five years ago, we were talking to Colleen on the phone last week and she said, you know, the state elections people told us not a problem, you'll always have a machine. Oh, except every four years when we're doing primaries. So, there's 700 school districts that are gonna have to go outside the big cities, you know, so there's probably 650, 660 schools that are gonna have to do a public vote. So, it's not like we're gonna be by ourselves. So, just get ready. It'll be nuts.
Fun times ahead, sounds like.
We are gonna, there's plenty of time. We'll put it in place and keep everybody informed, but we're just gonna have to start telling the public if that's true, you know, in our newsletters and those kind of things, things online, once we get to what the rules are. We'll work with Sarah to come up with some kind of public announcement posted on our website, but that's, there's always something interesting going on.
So, really to the public, there's no change. They're gonna fill in the same circles.
They're gonna fill in that little thing?
Instead of scanning in, it's put it in a box and then you won't find out till the next day.
Yeah, but see, the machine, the machine automatically rejects ones that are bad ballots. Okay, so if you vote for two people in that box, so we're gonna have to...
Do that manually.
We're gonna have to go through that screening process and determine, you know, what's a good ballot and what isn't, you know, before we start counting them. If the box isn't filled in or they got an X in there instead of a fill-in, that doesn't count, so. All those ballots get, but you could maybe have that on one side and not on the other so half the ballot would count. So, anyway.
And the old-fashioned slide ones, are no option there? I assume you'd...
We had 14 of those in the basement of the library and the library and I shared them and the county came and took them and junked them last year. Well, you know, the whole reason they did this was for AD accessibility and all that kind of stuff. I guess that stuff gets thrown out the window now because the special stuff that comes on those machines. We're gonna have to do the same thing we always did to accommodate people who were, you know, blind or had other issues. We'd send them in with their spouses, let them vote in an old booth like that, you know, lower the thing down so people in wheelchairs could access the machines. And we did do a lot of accommodation before. We'll just have to do the same kind of things again. Anyway, that's our interpretation. We talked for about an hour, the business officials, 25 was trying, what in the world are we gonna do? People with multiple voting sites like North Syracuse, you won't get that vote until eight o'clock the next morning, right?
Have to register there.
Right.
Yeah, but they still have multiple sites.
So, I just wanted to vote, I wanted to have a public discussion about it so you knew and the public and the people who are here understand what's gonna happen. It'll be different. Back to 1886, or no, 1786, right? First Continental Congress. Amazing how things come full circle.
I was gonna say, I'd do better things, but I'm not sure. We're talking about budget now, so.
Right.
Athletics, does that budget? Any changes from last time at all?
None.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Chris? You gotta have questions for Chris. You have to give him a difficult time. No, there'd be next time. We're gonna see him for next time, probably.
That works.
So, I did get a question from the former AD here that, do we know what color the football uniforms are for next year?
White and red.
Ah, okay.
Outlining with black.
He was asking me and I couldn't answer, but he had a very strong opinion on what they should be.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you.
So, you can go sit next to Leon and learn something. Okay. So, administrative budget, Jamie?
There's no changes from that one either. I will say that attached to your stuff in board docs, there is a change. We did make a change under undistributed, which is the benefits. Workers' comp rose 35,000 and medical insurance dropped 184. So, the consortium had reduced their initial estimate from 8% to 7% and we may end up going to 6%. They're waiting for the data to come through, you know, the, you know, the more months we have, the more they can project what the whole year is gonna be. So, they wanted to have another month or so of data, a month or two, so they may come out with a new number by the end of February, the beginning of March. So, we may end up going down to, if it drops to 6%, it'll drop it another 185,000, 184, 681.
So, did you drop it on the chart?
We dropped it under the special ed, the new presentation. So, you see it's an attachment on the next item.
So, we're not gonna go back and change the prior ones. All the new presentations you see will have the new numbers in them, okay? So, going forward, you'll see that changes. But you should be able to project those, track those changes by going back through those. So, as we make changes in the budget, this list will get longer.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions about administration?
Yeah, anybody? So, now we move on to special ed with Rocco.
Good evening. So, yeah, I'm pleased to go and discuss with you the proposed special education budget for the 2021 school year. So, I'll get right into the different budget codes and try and highlight, you know, key areas within those budget areas. And if you guys have any questions and anything I didn't cover, just please interrupt me at any time. So, we'll kind of get right into first the salaries codes. In here, we have all the salaries of the teachers, teaching assistants, school psychologists and social workers, as well as occupational and physical therapists. There's, the only change that we are looking at in terms of employment is we are requesting within this budget an increased position at Dergi, a new special education teacher. And really, that's, a year ago, we had a retirement at Dergi for a special education teacher and based at that time and looking at the projections for this year, we believed that we could, you know, meet the needs of the students at Dergi this year with the staff without replacing... meet the needs of the students at Dergi this year with the staff without replacing that retirement. And now that, at this time, looking at next year and our projections for the students with disabilities at Dergi, we see a very large increase in numbers for, for that school. So we'd like to just request that we reinstate that position so that we have the same number of special ed teachers at Dergi as we did historically over the past, ever since I've been around here. But otherwise, all of the staffing is, is the same. It's just contractual increases in those salary codes. Under the equipment code, that's just for items that are over a thousand dollars. We've been maintaining 3,300 in that budget code for forever and that seems to work and no change there. Then to the contractual codes, we have some changes I want to highlight in here. The first contractual code that we have, we're looking, are proposing a, a large percentage increase for next year's budget. This is based on some clarification that we received at the end of last year with regards to one-to-one nurses. So there, we have a student in our district with significant medical needs and those needs are provided in school with a, with a one-to-one Medicaid nurse. And that that is service that that child needs, not just in school, but at home. And so the family has, do Medicaid, had that nurse support the student at home. And then that person would also come into school and support the student's medical needs at school. So other districts have been doing this throughout the state, but New York, in collaboration with Medicaid, has, you know, made a determination that is, it is the school district's responsibility for that support while in school. And so we are, we are covering that cost this year. It happened way after the budget was developed that we got this information. So, but in looking at how we would support that student this year, we decided that the best way would be to provide it through contractual money so that the student's nurse that, that child and family has had for all these years at home, as well as in school, can continue on. We just contract with the same agency that the parent was previously contracting with so that that person can continue on. And that's how we pay it is through a contractual, instead of an employee of the district. So that's that increase in that code. The other significant increase percentage wise in these codes is on the conferences code. So we've always maintained a very small amount in that budget code through the years, 500, 800, somewheres along those lines. But we also hit, every year consistently always send certain staff to three different annual state conferences. Those are the New York State Association of School Psychologists, New York's annual conference, the New York State Speech and Hearing Association's annual conference, and then the New York State Special Education Council Conference. And so because we've been doing this every year, we've been finding ways to pay for psychologists, speech therapists, administrators to go through different monies, through federal grants and things along those lines. We were asking that if we could shift that over to the, to the general fund here and so that we can just always have that money available for, for staff to go to those. Those are very valuable conferences for specialty areas in, in our district so that those speech therapists, psychologists can go to, you know, the, the different domains or workshops that are really in line with what their, either the concern is at their school or their professional growth and things along those lines. So that's why there's that increase. In the materials and supplies codes, we're requesting no changes at all from the current budget to next year. That's all the same. We last year reallocated some of the funds in the different budget, in the different building codes, based on enrollment and looked at that this year. There really wasn't much of any enrollment changes for this coming year as we project, so we just would keep it the same. Okay. In the BOSI's budget, there's, there's a lot of changes in here, so, you know, please feel free to jump in and cut me off. But how we're looking at this, and I can also provide you guys if you want a supplement to this in terms of how we have come up with these budget numbers. But BOSI's gives us a, a bill every month in terms of the cost of the special education programs and services. My office looks at those bills, makes sure that everything's in line with the student's IPs, what the students are getting, because there's changes that happen all the time. Kids moving into programs in BOSI's, coming out of BOSI's programs, or changing services, having services added or taken away. So we always make sure that that's accurate. And so our most current bu, bill from BOSI's, December's, end of November's bill, we could look at all the students in the district that are receiving these BOSI's programs and services, the cost of those programs and services. And then I can take and look at all the students that are there and project where will they be next year. And it just so happens that next year, we have a number of kids that will definitely be exiting out, kids that are graduating with diplomas or kids that are aging out of their programs. So we're losing kids from the, the team program, the skate program, and, and a few kids from the SED programs. So, so I can just simply go and take that, that bill from BOSI's and subtract out the exact cost of those students in those, in those budget areas and then create a projected budget for next year on that. The only difference with that is, is in the handicap, the Oswego BOSI's budget code, we're actually going to have a, a decrease. We're projecting to have a, a less, one less kid in that program next year. However, we want to ensure that we have some fund balance in the event that we have students come in to the district that need these placements and be able to have money in an account code to be able to fund that. So in essence, what we're kind of looking at doing is all the other budget codes in these BOSI's areas is taking out any potential fund balance whatsoever in there and then just making sure that we have the one handicap, the Oswego BOSI's budget code having a larger fund balance and to cover any projected changes for next year. So that's how we kind of came up with all of that. I believe that that's a, and you know, if you looked at the, the current billing that we have right now and what our budget is this year in those areas, we did have a, a pretty good amount of fund balance. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the, the cuts that we're looking at in the BOSI's budget overall. Then the, the last code is the debt services. And this is the, the money that we use to pay for our extended school year program. It's in special education, you're probably aware that the extended school year, New York State reimburses the district back 80% of the cost of that extended school year. However, that reimbursement comes back over years of time and small pieces. So there's a slow reimbursement rate that comes back, so to, to fund initially the, the program, the, the start of that program, we have to have money in this debt services account. And this is the same amount we've been using for several years. We find that that, that amount really is sufficient to be able to cover that, that initiation of our summer school program. So no recommended changes. So then what that does is overall brings us to a, a special education, you know, total budget that comes under our current year's budget of almost 400,000, which is very unique and I think a really good thing in terms of, you know, we saw in our BOSI, special ed budget over a few years, you know, pretty significant increases over time and this year we look like we can really cut some of that out, cut back. Any questions?
Rocco, I'm, I'm just curious. It's not anything that's really important, I guess, but I wonder what goes on at the Oswego program?
So they have similar programs as the OCM BOSI's special education program. They, they have a day treatment program up there. They call it the Stepping Stones Day Treatment Program. And they have been able to cover the needs of some students that OCM BOSI's has not been able to. So some of their most significant mental health needs of students here that had been going through an OCM BOSI's day treatment program and through significant issues and behaviors that exhibited in, in that program, both OCM BOSI's has come back and say, we're no longer able to support the needs of that student. And so we've been able to go to the city Oswego BOSI's and, and they have in fact been able to, to meet that need. They have, they have a lot of resources up there and it's a lot more expensive than OCM BOSI's, but it, the resources that they have embedded in their program are, are able to allow them to, to provide more support. Also, we have sometimes kids that transfer to Beeville from Oswego County that are already placed in the city BOSI's programs. So sometimes if a kid's in a program and a placement up in city BOSI's and is doing well in that program, we potentially look to maintain them in that program. So, you know, Fulton, for example, is a much shorter bus drive than Cortland, which we have kids in OCM BOSI's and Beeville driving all the way down to Cortland for. So, so you know, it's a cross contact we do for, for a few rare exceptions. We got four kids up there right now.
Rocco, I just have a, a quick question. I appreciate that you're a good steward of our financial resources and I too want to be a good steward. I do have a question though. We've had a lot of success with the co-teaching programs. And I know how critically important parents and students feel that is to enable students who learn differently to be successful. So I'm wondering, you know, we had a plan related to, you know, co-teaching services. And do you feel like you have co-teaching opportunities for the humanities and math and science in, you know, each of the, each of the buildings so that students are receiving that service?
That's a great question. So the, the three-year plan that was kind of laid out with the support of the Board of Education and, and the superintendent, I think was ended at this, this year. So with that plan, we were able to slowly increase all of our elementary schools. So we now have six special education teachers in all of our elementary schools so that there's a special ed teacher that's at every, you know, one full-time special ed teacher devoted to one grade level. That is, that's amazing. I think that, that speaks tremendously to what you're kind of suggesting and I'm so pleased with that. Honestly, I never thought that day would ever come. And when I started off here, we'd have 2.2 special ed teachers at Palmer and, you know, three special ed teachers at pretty much all the rest of our elementary schools. So we'd have teachers, you know, transporting back and forth, going to Palmer and doing a period of resource room for 40 minutes and then going to McNamara and doing some stuff over there. And special teachers, you know, going across three different grade levels, trying to support some form of co-teaching at those levels. So we've come a long way and I'm very, you know, I can't believe how great that has been. And going into our secondary schools, we do focus in on the English, math and history subject areas. And we have our teaching assistants that really provide a lot of support in those other core content areas. And, and we've been, I think, successful with that. But that certainly is something that can be looked at in the future too, a little bit more clearly to see how we're meeting the needs in those, you know, the science areas, I guess, is the best one that we don't look at as carefully. Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Rocco.
Okay, thank you guys so much.
Trip request?
Trip request, yep. This is the first reading, over the April break for girls lacrosse to travel down to Baltimore for a contest. This will be on for final approval at our next meeting. No school days will be missed.
Questions? Moving on to new business. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the Dergi Junior High School Latin I, Grade Eight World Language, Cambridge Latin Courses, Unit One and Two pursuant to the attached. Matt, second? Jen? Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero? Trip request? Resolved that the Board of Education approved the trip, requests for promuliring military grade five students to travel and participate in the grade five Camp Tulli trip to Pendleton, New York, June 23rd, 24th, 2020 pursuant to the attached motion. Matt, Jim, second? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero? Approval of diversity and equity. Mission statement, resolved that the Board of Education approved the diversity and equity committee's mission statement pursuant to the attached. Matt, Jeff? Did we want to amend that to just remove, just portability at this point? Until they tweak it again? Do, well, I was going to amend, amend the motion.
So we propose an emo, a motion to amend for the, remove the, I think we were going to remove the word, was the, proposed from Joe?
At least, at least for now, because they will be retweaking it.
Yeah. Sounds like we're going to be changing it at a regular, potentially updating it.
Just take the word physical out.
Okay, so motion on?
Motion to remove the word physical. Jim, Matt? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero? Okay, so now we have a motion in second to prove it as amended. Opposed? We already moved to second it, so you got yes, eyes? Okay, opposed? Carried eight zero? Got through that one? Okay, so. Resolved that the Board of Education approved the Bonfide Central School District Annual Calendar 2020, 2021 pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jeff, second? Jen? This is early. Usually we end up doing this like the first week of March. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero? Resolved that the Board of Education approved the Bonfide Central School District Single Audit, June 30th, 2019 and the Extra Classroom Activity Audit, June 30th, 2019 pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim? Yeah, or Jeff, second? Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero? Resolved that the Board of Education approved the Bonfide Central School District to enter into a contract with Underdog, Cortland Madison, Board of Cooperative Educational Services for High-Speed Communication Services pursuant to the attached. Have a motion? Matt? Jeff? Questions?
They got better pricing, so our price is going down for, for our data. That's why we're doing a new contract. Yeah, I like those too.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carried eight zero? Approval of contract with King &amp; King Architects. Resolved that the Board of Education approved a contract with King &amp; King Architects pursuant, pursuant to the attached. Do I have a motion? Jim, Matt? Questions?
So I just wanted to bring up, after our last board meeting, I was looking at the proposals that were sent. And although I respect our relationship with, with that firm and the board members on the Facilities Committee that brought that to the Board for Recommendation, I think I'm unclear on the financial piece of the firms. So I wanted to possibly ask for some more information on that. When you look at the proposals, it's not very clear. And I think we kind of have, you know, have to ask that question for the community and for our taxpayers, like what are those, what do those prices look like? And when you look at those proposals, it's kind of like, it's not comparing apples to apples. So I was, I was just unclear on that.
Jamie?
Well, the base bid, King &amp; King was cheaper than the other two. But like I mentioned before, price, we're not required under the law of the comptroller to, or on policy to go on price. It's professional services, it's like hiring a attorney. They, they asked that we do this periodically. We do it about every five years. And it's been about fi, five years since I've been since we did this. So the only difference is, is that King &amp; King add a little bit more to their thing to differentiate between new construction renovation and repetitive renovation. So all of them require, you know, said that they would get lump, lump sums for pre-refereendum work and now that would be waived afterwards. That was common. King &amp; Kings was 25,000. Ashley McGraw's was 18 and SWBR's was 60. When I look at the, the pricing for all these people, they're, it's compatible with what's in the industry. It's close to what the other bidders had. There's nothing really way out of whack. The only difference is there is a misprint on page 21. They, they listed the, how much they would get presented to the fee based on certain. They listed the, how much they would present to the fee based on certain, like schematic design phase would be 10%. They put 5% in the blocks next to it, but that's why it put 10%. That adds up to 100. So that's the only misprint I could see in the, in the proposed contract. So I'd have to get them to correct that page. So in my mind, we did the process, published on October 9th. We got nine responses. We talked in the, in the board meeting about how Tiffy and I were going to go through and work our way through those, those nine responses to see if people were responsive or not. You know, and in our opinion, five of the nine weren't. Then we started doing our due diligence and talking to some people, and another person dropped out. So we ended up with three that we brought to the committee on the 17th for interviews. And then after we interviewed all three people that evening, we had a discussion with a group over, you know, price was reasonable, was within range of others. Experienced as with the district over 25 years. The, the other pitches did not rise above King &amp; King. King &amp; King mentioned Bevel students repeatedly and what was good for Bevel kids in their presentation, and they made mistakes in the past, they paid for it. I mean, I've been here a decade, and if they missed something in a design, they redesigned it for nothing. Not every firm's going to do that. In other words, they own their mistakes. So you're not going to find anybody who's mistake-free in that business. It depends on how you, how you manage that when you find it out. I think that, I thought we had an honest process that we use in RP, that business officials have been using for years. You know, we had a, what's the word for it? We had a way we're evaluating people within that to comply, huh? A rubric, and we judge the people against the rubric. I don't, I don't really understand that. I can understand board members having questions, but I don't, I thought we had a good process. Our normal committees, you know, we meet on all kinds of things, we talk about it for two or three hours, and then the committees make a proposal, the board discusses it, and then we vote. So if we're going to change that or do something different, somebody has to tell us, it's kind of, we're kind of, you know, are we doing the right thing or not? So if I feel like I'm like heckle and juckle, what's a process supposed to be? I mean, I'll do whatever the board wants, but I thought we had a decent process. I thought the committee and Tiffy and I put a lot of time into it. And I, since then, we've sent you the proposals, we've sent you our rubric, we've showed you what we had, what the, what the committee saw. And the only difference is that some, you weren't, I mean, there are only three board members there, plus Tiffany and I to interview those people when they came in with their team. So the impressions that we got from those presentations are not, you get some of the flavor in our, our notes from the meeting, and why we came up with the rationale as the committee to recommend that person, that firm. Because, you know, if we were having trouble with King &amp; King, you know, there would have been another alternative, but we're not having trouble with King &amp; King. They're a good company, you know, they have a lot of workers, they do, you know, like 100 districts, so they have a lot of the big experience base. It's not like dealing with a sole proprietor or just a six-man shop, so if something happens, the principal passes away, or you have backup to all these things. It's a group of professional architect practice. So those issues that might have eliminated other people, you know, went away with these guys for that reason. So, but we had three really good bidders that they came and talked, who could have done our work. We just felt as a group that they weren't any better than them, they weren't any cheaper than them, you know, their design teams were okay, but in fairness to us, we're the customer, we're going to get more long-term bang for the buck out of King &amp; King.
And I'd like to add to that as a part of the committee, you know, kind of what Jamie kind of ended there with, even with all things equal, something I got to consider on these proposals and any other proposal I consider even at work, is kind of which one is the least risky. So, you know, all things considered, especially pricing, similar, you know, performance unknown for the other two, but proven with the one we got. So that was kind of what tipped me, my hand is, okay, let's consider all things equal, even if I don't believe they necessarily were during the presentations. Keeping the list, the risk as low as possible for the district was, do we go with somebody new that we're not, you know, we basically go at risk and see how they do, or go with something we know? So I didn't see anything there that made me feel like we had to go out at risk to try something new, and I think we're getting the best value based on what I experienced in the committee meeting. So that's, that's where my recommendation fell.
So Jamie, I just want to be sure, so you said this was the cheapest plan with King &amp; King?
Well, their, their prices are lower on the, on the base bid than the other people to start with. So for $5 million of new construction, Ashley McGraw was seven and a quarter, King &amp; Kings was 6.9, and SWBR was 7.9. So if I go through that kind, that's similar separation. Keep in mind that when we, right now, we're approving a pre-referendum agreement. When we actually get to the point where you actually have a contract, where you're going to have to, so say the Funding the Future Committee meets, I did finally finish the schedule over the weekend, I'll get that out to everybody in the next couple days, or in the Friday letter so we can see it. And at the end of that discussion, you're going to come up with a building project, say. And once you determine what that building project is in a gross sense, or a series of projects over time, you're going to sit down with that architect, and you're going to negotiate the fee for that, for that work. It's really tough now, this was done in an attempt to get them to tell us what their rates are for a typical job. But when we actually sit down and do it, we're going to sit down with them and say, okay, here's what the actual job's worth, let's go talk about what you have to do. Because right now, we haven't even defined the job. We're asking for them to be consultants over the next 12 months, to sit at those Funding the Future meetings as advisors, and arrange for us to go see other schools. So if we were thinking about renovating a school building, well, find a, a school that you've worked on in the last five years, and let's go see how you renovated this elementary school. That's just as interesting. So we'll drive someplace, El Myra or someplace, and we'll take a tour of that school and get two cents, and talk with their facilities people and maybe some of their board members about their experiencing doing this and what they ran into, so it's part of our due diligence. So once we define the project a little bit more succinctly, we'll sit down with the architect and say, okay, some of this is renovation, some of this is new building. Meanwhile, we're going to pay them the $20,000 to help us over the next year in order to be able to do this work. Because they have, we have to pay for their time to sit there. It's the same thing with the CM. I mean, the CM will act as a break on the architect, so the architect has great, you know, he designs, they want things to look spectacular, and then the CMs will be aligned to help us to control the pricing. Oh, yeah, you can do that, but it's going to cost you 100% more than doing it this way. So we need that help in order to make it be affordable. So those are kind of the roles that they play. So just to, I'm trying to answer your questions as honestly as I can.
Yeah, I had some questions as well, some of them with Denise, and some of them I've asked, you know, to receive some more information. It's been a little bit of a challenge to get some of them. Specifically, you know, the rubric that was used, I would prefer not to see like the blank rubric. I'd like to see how the final three actually measured up against each other. And that's what I was looking for. I mean, we were told that is in the Friday letter at the last meeting, that we're going to get like the spreadsheet with the evaluations of those firms that you interviewed, and that's what I'd like to see before I make a decision of yes or no. I'm not saying the firm that we're currently using is necessarily not the right one, but I don't know if it is the right one, if we go through the process.
We did not build a spreadsheet, but the, the final result, the decision was made based on the interviews with the three teams that came in. Okay, so we picked the three teams, we each had 45 minutes or so to, or half hour to talk to us, and we spent 10 or 15 minutes talking about each one, and the next person came in. And then when they all left, we sat there, and all of us had our own thoughts about how each group did as a, as a presenter. Because you expect the three professionals, the idea would be, just like we would bring three candidates forward to a group of teachers to interview to be an assistant principal or something, we could live with any of those three candidates. That's the way I look at it. So we brought three firms that had record, that had reputations, we did our due diligence, talked to other districts who use them, and said, these firms are qualified to come and do our work. And then let's see how they perform in a room, a small room, with just us asking a series of questions, which is what we did. And then at the end of that process, you know, one of them was close to King &amp; King, but they weren't better than King &amp; King, and the other one finished a distant third in the group.
But I don't know how you, the, what you just said and how you measure them, I don't know what you use to measure them, and that's the point. I'm just repeating, I just asked for what you stated at the last meeting. Now, if you misspoke, then just say you misspoke. You said that you had a spreadsheet with the criteria that was used to evaluate the firms. That's what I was asking for.
Well, that was, that was a criteria that we used to initially filter the full nine, to get down to the three. So we didn't, I didn't have a realistic criteria. We asked each firm a list of questions that were similar. The list of sheets were identical. I don't think we kept those, we just threw those out.
Right, I asked, yeah.
We kept the notes, while I'm just, I'm being honest with you, we did not keep those things because we didn't think it would be relevant. Once we had that experience with us sitting there as a group and doing what our committee was tasked to do, which was to bring a recommendation to the board, we picked the firm that we thought would be, and I'm speaking for the board members, because all five of us sitting there had the same feeling, but the, when the smoke cleared, this is how we all felt. And this was wait until everybody was gone. So, and we felt about the, the people that spoke the same way, the one, each one, each of us thought the one firm we were not happy, we did, we were kind of disappointed with the way they presented themselves. And the other one was really pretty good, but they weren't any better than King &amp; King. In fact, we thought King &amp; King's presentation was better. Not because we were biased, because we were trying to sit there and be honest with listing to what they had to say. It was their chance to shine in front of us. So as far as a criteria and what we came up, it was a gut feeling when we sat there on these questions based upon what they were telling us as it went along. Because you have to have, remember, this is more than money. It's lowering risk, it's this feeling that they have the district's best interests at heart. They know more about this stuff than we do. We're trying to make an educated choice to get professionals to help us. So I, I got to tell you, that's where we, that's where we finished.
I'm, I'm just going to throw this out there. I think I feel better with you saying all of this tonight, like all those criteria, it just didn't make sense to me, the financial piece. So with you going through all those key things, yeah, thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
And I agree about the financial piece, that you can't make the decision just on the cost. It's very confusing to me, because when I do, you know, I look at all three of them, and necessarily one being more expensive or less really depends upon what value, dollar value you're going to be spending on the contract. And I don't know how big Funding the Future is going to be, is it going to be a $5 million, $25 million? And who may have had the best rate at $1 amount, doesn't have the best rate at the next dollar amount. And I just think about, you know, my very first vote, actually, I think it was a piano, but I didn't look at that one, I happened to look at the scoreboard one, and I took, we got two scoreboards to choose from, and there are $22,000 difference, and we ended up voting on the more expensive one. So I took that as an example, and that's what these rates don't mean a lot to me, because it really depends upon what the architectural firm specs. So, for example, you could have someone with the highest rate, but doing the lowest scoreboard and vice versa, and it actually, the lowest, you can't really just look at the percentage, it really depends upon what they're specking. So I don't know, like, what you've experienced with them before, how that has compared with other schools and the items that they get, so...
I've worked with other architects' firms before. You know, these rates from all these companies are within the range of what everybody else charges in the marketplace, so they're not highly variable one way or the other, if a point or two one way. Is, is it the difference between paying a half a point more on 50 million, or, that's not going to truly drive the decision, that's going to be built into your cost. It goes into, how do you trust that firm? Going forward, do you, does the Board of Ed and the people managing the project within the district have confidence in that firm is going to be truthful? And that goes to risk, tell you all the right skinny, you can really build this building for that, as opposed to going out for a vote and then finding out when the bids come in that you were vastly, you know, grossly underpriced for what the market really costs, which is why we hire a CM to help us. But that also goes to the architect. And we even had some wild stuff with them. When we had a rebid, it came in kind of reasonable, because you're going to have some of those things occasionally, but I don't know what, I don't know what the answer, I don't know how to answer you. I just think that you're buying a professional service, these guys have done a good job. We went through a reasonable and pretty focused process. We put a lot of time and energy, we're trying to be as honest as we can about the process. I know it's not an easy decision to make, but that's just where we are, there's some unknown.
And it wasn't the process actually leading up to, because you were very clear in the communications to the board how it was going to go. I guess I've never gone through this process before, so when the Facilities Committee is meeting, I assume that they'd be gathering all of the information to share with the Board, the Board to have a complete discussion amongst all of us, to decide amongst the three firms. I was shocked at the last meeting that the decision had been made. So the process, you were very clear at the process leading up to it, so because it's my first time going through it, I didn't know what the process would be after. So when I'm looking at all this stuff, you know, you say, I, I know that you've done this for a very long time, and I'm not questioning you or that, I'm just trying to figure out from my perspective, because, yes, we all as a board make the decision, but my vote is an individual vote, and I need to know what I'm voting on, because if I'm ever asked by a taxpayer, why did you choose that? I had no information until I asked for it at the last meeting, that's all. So we may want to consider going forward how we do this. I'm not saying unhappy with this firm, I don't know. I know they've been working with it, I mean, they have changed orders, probably like every other firm when we go through stuff. That's normal, that's construction, there's a lot of unknowns, my husband's in that industry. I get it, it's not that, there's no perfect firm out there. I'm just trying to do my due diligence, because I haven't done this, you've done it your entire career.
Well, I think that we, we did what we thought was the right thing, what we thought the charter of the committee was, go through this, pick a person, and recommend the firm to the Board. And then have a public discussion like we're having right now, say, up or down, yes or no.
Potentially, too, next time, knowing that if the Board chooses, this is something that's important enough, maybe we have the presentations right here at the board meeting. I mean, I don't, we've been through this before, so I guess I'm a little surprised at the level of interest, but if, if the Board feels next time we do this, let's have them present right here at a board meeting. And then if all board members feel that's a comfortable thing, then all, by all means, there was nothing, there was no intent to hide anything, it's just, and the board meeting was open, but if the Board agrees next time, let's just do it right here. There's nothing stopping us from having these presentations at the full board meeting, but, you know, it was relied upon with the committee at the time to, to do that.
Yeah, certainly, we could do that. I think the, the Facilities Committee was open to all of us, and I think you sent even a, or someone sent a reminder the day of the meeting and said, you know, what do you guys want to eat? So we kind of were all triggered to think, oh, the meeting is tonight, and, you know, we can go and, you know, hear all the presentations. So I'm, I'm comfortable either way. I appreciate the information that was shared via Board Docs. I, I thought the presentations were quite thorough. I, I found your rubric helpful and your notes really helpful, so...
Yeah, the only recommend, recommendation I make is just, especially like the rubric for those other things, because the last meeting did say price, but there are a whole bunch of other variables to consider, and you have to with professional services, and it would be nice to actually see those rubrics completed, so I can see that part of it, the more of the subjective part, the numbers are numbers, but the other criteria, seeing how they're all weighted against each other. Not that that is the only thing that you're looking at, there's other factors involved, just to get more of a comprehensive picture. You know, when I look back at like the bids that we get from you guys, it's just very detailed, I mean, you're supposed to go with the lowest bidder for like when there's, the last two, you had the automotive parts, another one, presentation equipment, and it's very detailed, each company, everything that you're looking at, and how much each is. I guess I was looking more of that type of information, more comprehensive spreadsheet, I guess I was looking more of that type of information, more comprehensive spreadsheet, that's all, to help me understand and look at all the important. You guys choose what's important. You're the ones that have to work with them day in and day out on the whole project. It just gives me more information, you know, being accountable to the taxpayer as well.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carry it eight zero. Moving on to board round, board roundtable. At least you mentioned something.
Yes, I, so I had emailed everybody. I wanted to talk about the board policy on grading. I've been approached by many parents about some of the science classes and basically seven through 12. And so, I just wanted to bring this up for discussion. I know that we approved it, I think it actually was my first meeting. It was the second reading, so I kind of went back and looked at previous notes on board docs, and it looked like there was the red lines that said something about us reviewing this with like teacher input. So, I wanted to bring it back up so that we could discuss it.
What's the policy number? Do you know?
Well, some, some parents, it's, it's basically like 10% is based on...
No, I meant the policy number, like the four digit.
Well, the policy number, I...
I don't know.
Is it the 7210?
Do you remember which meeting was on board docs?
Student evaluation, promotion, and placement. Is it that one?
Uh, no. Give me one second.
I don't know if that's the right one, but...
Anybody can pull that up, Joe?
Okay, we got it.
I'll say that I never knew that there was a board policy on this district wide. I can tell you, when I was teaching, each teacher was able to do their thing. Not that that's right either. I think that, you know, probably would have helped if all the science teachers or all the ones that taught the same, like I taught chemistry did the same thing. That's, you know, debatable. But one thing I do notice, ever since my oldest son entered Ray and grading was presented, how the classes were graded, one thing I did notice, and this goes all the way through three years now because my oldest son's in eighth grade, whether it's Dergi or Ray, the teachers, every single one stressed, "This is a board policy." And I sit there kind of shrinking because it is a board policy, I guess. I'm not sure how it came about. I mean, we did have discussion in the policy meeting that with all the changes going on in education right now, specifically science, that science labs, for example, are only 10%, but we have a double period to accommodate the requirements for that. And so, a very strong emphasis in the program. And that's kind of how the conversation started from there. But I don't know, you're probably getting stuff because your oldest has entered sixth grade. I don't, you're probably getting it more often. Like, to me, it's just old now, but...
I have some parents that are, that have come to me from the high school as well. So, in, in our policy, it says, it's 7210, number five, so it goes A through F. And so, there's language in here that says, for lab-based courses, lab reports may not exceed 10% of a marking period. So, there are some courses that have 90% of the grade being based on summit of assessments, which, you know, in a course, sometimes you might have one test or maybe two tests at a marking period. So, you know, people are saying, and as a parent, as an educator, I, I understand what they're saying. So, you have a child's grade being determined on maybe one or two tests, 90% of it. And then 10% is classwork, lab work, or classwork that they spend, you know, 10 weeks doing. So, I just thought that maybe we could discuss this as a, I don't know if we would do that at Policy Committee, whoever's on there, bring it back up for discussion.
When's the last time this one specifically was reviewed? We, it was just reviewed by the Policy Committee recently, right?
It was reviewed in July this year.
In May and June. It was brought for first reading in June, the board.
Can, can somebody from the Policy Committee maybe give us a summary of what was the discussion on this one?
They were gonna put a committee together that comprised staff and review it. I think it actually, honestly, at this point, with what the state is doing, we're not really sure if some of this may change in the end anyway. Because the last meeting I went to with the chancellor and the commissioner, they're, they're looking at maybe doing away with some regions altogether. They're not sure if they're gonna be using regions. They're looking at restructuring everything. They're looking at CTE. They're looking, she mentioned numerous times capstone and project-based learning. So, they're looking at a variety of things for graduation requirements. So, I'm not, I'm not sure. Everybody's actually got their eye on some of those hearings they're gonna have across the state. They are, I think, going to add two more to the schedule. The last I heard, they're gonna try to get one in Syracuse and possibly one in New Hartford so that they can get the central New York area a little closer. And I would encourage anybody that gets on the state ed website to fill out the survey if you get a chance as well. But we talked about bringing this back and maybe looking at it and having staff or somebody look at it to see if it would be a little more realistic.
It wasn't, we passed it with special notation. You got, you and Brian weren't here, so it would have been the meeting before you guys. We, we passed it, saying we're going to approve it as is with the understanding that a committee would be put together this year comprised of teachers and administrators from all three secondary buildings with all subject areas giving input in that. Because every department is different and the types of expectations in their programming. And I just see some inconsistencies in this as well, you know, where a region's exam is not counted as in part of the final grade. But if you have a non-region's course, you know, you do have a final grade possibly, and it's 10%. And then you have the lab courses that have an additional 10%, which means some of these classes, their form of, their end-of-unit assessments are weighted a lot more than other classes. It's just not real equitable. And just wondering if the teachers can come up with a solution to do that. Because some kids, you know, their interests are different. Some kids may take, focus on the science and math classes. Their averages are put together differently than those who may be in art classes, which are more project-based, or English and writing, they have more writing bent to them, to just see what they come up with and, you know, see if it's something that we would consider to see as equitable for all students.
So, has, has the committee even, yeah, Jeff, yep. Has the committee been formed to do that since we're midway through the school year?
No, the committee has not been formed. So, at the first Policy Committee meeting of this school year, the superintendent, we had a conversation about this policy specifically. And the conversation with cabinet and the Policy Committee at the time was that we were gonna look at administratively. We didn't want to give up that power, so to speak, to review with staff because we have heard nothing from parents or community over the last few years with regard to this policy. So, I would actually encourage parents to follow the chain of command and follow the whom to contact when there's an issue with grading and that specific policy. Because our principals, and when we saw this recently, the requests come through, we've had conversations, and nobody seems to, to be bringing anything forward through dialogue with, with their staff about that. That being also said, in conversation with Matt, the discussion was also, given the changes at SED and the changes specifically with the graduation requirements. We have administrators that also heard conversations this past weekend at conferences that they were attending, that the guidance that we're receiving is that we should not be making any changes at this point with anything related to grading until we have a better understanding of where we are with the state's guidance with regions and graduation requirements. That would have been on the conversation based on an email that came from a board member at the next Policy Committee meeting, but we haven't had that yet. That's scheduled for February 10th.
So, I do want to tell you that I, I did tell them to, you know, follow that chain of command. And what's happening is, is, you know, they're being told that it's a board policy, and there's nothing they can do. So, I mean, is, which I understand, it's, it's in our policy. So, is there a way that, because it would be wonderful to hear from the teachers that teach our students in this district and to hear what they want. Do they want to keep it as 90-10, you know, and so can we move forward and do that?
Yeah, nobody's disagreeing with you that, but we've also had conversations with the associations that they're under the same understanding that until we have better guidance from SED as to where we are with things, you know, part of the Policy Committee's charge last year at that same meeting was that, you know, we're gonna step back. We're gonna take things slow. We're not gonna rush. And we feel administratively that we don't want to rush with this policy when we have, you know, uncertainty from state ed's perspective. And we also have other committees that are currently moving forward decisions that are taking a little bit longer than we had anticipated. So, we all agree that eventually there will be conversation with regard to this policy. But until we have better direction, we're looking at it as not moving forward until we have that guidance.
Joe, do we know where this policy initially came from?
This policy initiated, was initiated back in 92 it was adopted. I think it was last revised in like 2011 or 12.
Who created it, is what I'm asking now?
So, we, we would have received guidance. Some of this is, is a merging of recommendation from Erie One BOCs and then our own district Board of Education policy based on recommendations, I believe, back in 2011, 12, specifically with the grading policy. Most of the time, you don't see the items listed here, like, for example, under this statement, "The superintendent of schools or his or her designee shall develop administrative regulations for grading, which include the following guidelines." Most of this is included within administrative regulations. And the general board policy is more consistent to statements like the frequency of the reporting period, whether the district maintains a philosophy of weighting courses. So, that's more general from Erie One.
So, this is a regulation, not a board policy, basically. Somebody handed this down and said, "Make this a policy," and it's not something created by the board.
No, this was recommended back, I believe, the changes were recommended back in a 2011, 12 school year to add more specific information into the policy.
Having taught science and lab courses with earth science, I wouldn't like this either. And it came after I retired, but it's true that if you, somebody only gives one or two tests, and that's what 90% of a student's grade is based upon, that's not a fair evaluation. So, either they ought to be giving a lot more tests that are true to the subject matter, or there ought to be another way of evaluating that takes other things into consideration, because this is not a good policy. It just isn't.
This policy was passed at the end of June in 2013, and I've inquired about this policy a number of times. And I've been told over and over again that this, a committee was put together in-house to do this. So, these specifics are definitely not being passed down from the state because if you go to other districts, how they grade it, it's not the same. So, this is unique to us.
I believe that, I believe that's just what I said.
And also, this policy was not discussed in the first policy meeting of this year. This policy, as a policy committee, has not been discussed since we discussed this policy back during the summer. It was brought up as, I knew that the charge that the committee gave the district, and we passed this policy with the understanding that that was gonna happen. And I brought this up, and we talked about our board goals when we were at the district office, and I got no response at anyone. So, I asked you privately afterwards, "What, what's going on? I don't understand what's going on. The committee asked the district to do this." And you said it was an administrative decision, but the board said that we wanted to get input from the staff members who are in the trenches and some of these issues that we're hearing. Teachers aren't happy, but they make it very clear that it's a Board of Ed policy. It's not theirs. And if I were them, I'd want to wash my hands of it as well. So, I guess what we need to discuss and figure out is what we want to do. Do we want to go with what the board has asked the district to do and get feedback from the teachers and the administrators at each building level because everything is unique? Or are we just gonna say, "Nope, we'll allow you to ignore it." And, you know, this is something that if this was an issue, this should have been discussed with the whole board, at least with the Policy Committee that gave the charge.
What I heard was, it sounded like a simple fix to this, is just get rid of all the really low-level detail stuff and leave that for administrative.
Oh, when we looked at it, I remember looking at this in 2013, and I had the same questions then that I have now, is where that detail...
But we don't need this level of detail, right?
No, you don't need the level of...
So, why don't we just remove it?
And that's, and that's administrative regs that you guys have to review anyway. But I would like to see what a regular, just plain, simple policy says and not with all the other details. And the other details should be looked at again and possibly just eliminated. Is it necessary to even have them? But let's start with a regular, normal policy without all the detail in it because this has way more detail than most of the policies we, we see in front of us.
Yeah, and I, and I can appreciate and respect the fact that, you know, you want administrators say. However, I, I really think that an educator should have some input in this, right? You know, a, a science class is different from a social studies class. And I think that teachers in our district should have some sort of, of input in what's happening and how they, you know, academic freedom and how they're grading our students.
Nobody's not saying that that's not the case. What we're saying is that the recommendation from the administration is that, given all the changes from the state, our recommendation of the board is that we hold until we have more guidance because we don't want to make a change and then be forced to make a change again. Then we get in that cycle of change, 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 and people don't know what they're doing moving forward.
But when are we looking to getting that guidance though?
Well, the state seems to be moving rather quickly with some of this work. As Joan mentioned, there's the regional forums for the graduation requirements. I would assume that by the end of the school year, we'll have a little bit more direction from the state.
They have, they have also been asked to spread it out over a two-year period and not do like they did with Common Core and just ram it down our throats. So, we're hoping that they do something rational and reasonable this time instead of just a knee-jerk reaction, which usually happens with government and the state. But I still, I still agree with the same concern I had in 2013. The detail doesn't need to be in there. It just needs to be a general policy. So, if we do a policy review on a general policy and take the other stuff out, there's nothing wrong with that. There still might be changes down from the state, no matter what.
There's two things. There's the, the local grading, and then there's a state grading. I think the biggest issue right now is the, the local grading, which, you know, policies can be, and within our policy, and this is what the Policy Committee's gonna need to discuss, within our policy on policy development, there's a policy that states that the board has a right to make them as expansive or restrictive as we want. Now, I, I personally have the philosophy that we should make them as broad as possible. But at the same time, I also think that we need to be listening to the people who are dealing with this, the kids, the teachers, and the parents, who, I'm sorry, when you have 10 weeks of grades and you have like one unit test, and if you bomb it on that day, it's no different than the complaints that we get on the state exams. We can't judge a kid on one day, but that is what's happening in some of these classes because they have one summit of assessment in a quarter. And talk about, you know, sixth and seventh graders, where I hear a lot of this are crushed, thinking that they're horrible students. Is there another way and other things to be looking at to encourage our students so they feel successful?
So, I think there's nothing in the policy that limits the number of tests a teacher can give. And we're in the third marking period, so I think what, maybe what I heard Joe asking for was, you know, he thinks that by the end of the school year, he's gonna have some more information from the state. Maybe we could ask that we revisit this, you know, toward the end of the school year and then see if you have the information from the state and, and see maybe where, you know, does it make sense to go now?
They haven't even started the talks now, and they're doing a search for a new commissioner. They are not gonna have anything by the end of this year. There's just absolutely no way because they haven't even started the process. They might have something by the end of next year. But I, I just, I have a problem with the local regs in there, and I always have. I did in 2013 when I first saw this.
So, there's no reason we can't take them out. I mean...
There is no reason why we can't take them out.
I mean, I don't know that it's the board's policy to dictate how many tests are given and all that. I think we give the general guidelines and let the administration and the teachers and all that determine how many are the right tests, how many right percentages. I don't know that the board is necessarily even qualified to do...
Actually, if you want to talk about getting in the weeds, that's getting in the weeds.
Yeah, I completely agree with you here. I'm...
No, I don't think so.
And I believe you sat there at that same board meeting, or that same policy meeting, and we're in complete agreement with what the charge was. So, if you had a change in philosophy here because you've been talking to the administrators, it would have been nice if you shared that with the rest of your board colleagues because I'm not okay with a directive being ignored. Now, we can have a discussion about the disagreement between all the parties in the directive, but the board sets the direction. And to be completely ignored, I feel that we have been completely disrespected. I have a problem with that. You may not have a problem with that. But I do have a problem with you sitting there and agreeing and us having side conversations about being in agreement with this and then you speaking what you just did tonight.
I just, I'm just gonna go back and with what Jeff said. So, we don't, we definitely don't have any say in how a teacher gives a test or anything like that. That's their, that's not our role. So, what I'm bringing up, let me just kind of go back. So, what I'm bringing up is the fact that our board policy dictates that 10% of a child's grade is based on a lab report or classwork or homework. The 90% that's left over is based on a summit of assessment, which is typically like an end of a unit. It's the end-all, okay? So, what I'd like to do, and Joe, I understand that you're saying you want to wait for the state, but who knows? but who knows when that's going to happen? So what's the harm in us forming that committee of teachers, educators in our district to have discussions to figure out what they would like to see? Before we go ahead and change the language, let's hear from them.
If the board is directing us to do that, that's not the conversation we had as a cabinet with Matt. I'd be happy to do whatever the board is asking us to do, but I want confirmation that that's the direction you want to go from every board member because that's not the communication that we had earlier on.
And I guess just to go off that, like, what I was questioning is, is it even the board's charter to say ten percent should be homework and ten percent should be labs and ninety? The numbers you, like, do we even need to go there?
Well, some districts do that.
Like, I don't think we need to. So like, when, you know, are we even qualified? And I'm speaking for myself, who probably am not. What is the right number? Like, if it's not ten, is it fifty, twenty, thirty, you know?
Well, it's different for every class, like a science course, a lab, you know, they have seat time. You need, you know, so.
Let's let administration and that take care of it, not the board put that into policy like it has to be fifteen for science classes and twenty. And I'm just making up numbers.
No, I know.
But like, do we even need to go there as a board? I mean, I think the input from the teachers and all that is great, but that probably should stop at the administrative level, not dictated by a policy at the board.
Right, but it's our board policy.
Currently it is, I agree. And that's why I'm proposing just take it all out. But, you know, if the consensus is we should leave it in here, but we need better numbers, I don't necessarily see that as the board's charter to come up with the right numbers for how much should be.
No, and I'm not asking for us to talk about the numbers right now. I'm just asking for us to go ahead and have our educators, our teachers in our district, like, speak in a, like, in a committee forum and come up with something that they would like. Before we go ahead and change this at all and wait for New York's, you know, New York State to come in and tell us what's happening because you don't know when that's going to happen. We should have input from our teachers and what they want to see.
And that should be done at the administrative level, not necessarily the board level. It's all, oh, correct. So if we take it out, then it puts it back in the hands of the administrators to take, figure it out, but.
Well, I think that's where it came from in the first place. And so I don't know that the administrators, no offense, Joe, are the best people to be coming up with a policy or a regulation on this. And I have seen situations where some teachers just go crazy with their grading and are way too liberal and others that are way too tough and so on. So I think there has to be guidelines. But I would like to see what the teachers want to have to evaluate their students, whether it's testing or in science laboratories or if it's classwork or it's projects, hands-on type of things, whatever. They say, "Oh, well, you can't grade homework," but there's nothing wrong with grading homework if you're sure they did it. And I would like to hear what, especially starting with science, what they would like to see as a grading policy. Maybe they're happy with it this way, but I don't think they would be. I know I wouldn't be.
I want to hear Jordan's opinion on this.
Yeah, straighten us out, Jordan.
I was developing it in my head. So from like a student perspective, going through chemistry two years ago, it was more of a difficult course for me, especially with the exams. And seeing that labs are limited with homework and classwork to ten percent is a little bit concerning because labs for me as a student were how I got my highest grades because I dedicated more time in the classroom with my teachers. And we have lab periods too, dedicated just to labs. So seeing that so low in restricting teachers is definitely like a concern as a student because I didn't do too great on the tests and exams. And that time for me as a student and for many other students for labs was really important. So in the future, like this, I think revision is definitely needed. I think a lot of teachers would agree because labs are a huge part in the science curriculum and they're being quite limited.
One of the other points just to make, appreciate that comment. I think the other piece is to also be looking at, there's a concern. And I think part of the conversation with teachers when we get to that point is that, you know, why is there such a discrepancy by the time a student gets to a summative evaluation with their performance? Because a summative evaluation can be more than just a test or, you know, it can be a whole host of options. So if there's not alignment between how the student's performing on the quizzes and the homework and all of that leading up to that and they're not being successful on the summative assessment, then that's a little bit of a red flag too, why that's not consistent. So, you know, it's not all, it's a bigger conversation. And again, going back to the earlier conversation, we can start whenever you, whenever you, if you want us to start tomorrow, we'll start tomorrow. But I think the bigger pieces, and Matt's been saying this all along, we're not looking to make change just to make change and to rush through a process. So this is going to take time because there's a lot of pieces to this. And if the expectation is that this is going to be resolved by the end of the school year, I don't think that's likely, given the depth of the conversations that we need to have with people.
Now, Jordan says those labs are a significant portion of the course timewise. Testing's important because they're going to have a regions exam too. So I guess you still have the green books to study from, right? Studying for the finals and the regions is important and being prepared for them through the testing process is important. But I think teachers need more flexibility and I think the labs could count more than they do because it's a big-time investment in the course. And I just think teachers need more flexibility. I doubt any of us knew what our grades were based on when we went through high school. What formulas the teachers used in any of our classes, I sure don't know. You know, I knew that if I did well on tests, I was going to get a good grade and if I did poorly, I was going to get a lousy grade. But I don't know what else was factored in. I have no idea. And science especially with the labs. So telling students it's ten percent, ninety percent, I guess that's okay, but it seems a little strange to me.
I'm not opposed to looking at this and I agree the teachers should have more input. What I'm worried about is that Matt isn't here tonight. And so I'm just really worried about as a board saying, "We're going to direct you to have a committee meeting, you know, and we want it to start tomorrow when the superintendent hasn't really been here to weigh in." So are you all comfortable with, I'm hoping he's going to be here at the next, be feeling better and maybe be here at the next meeting and maybe we could talk about it a little bit at the next meeting. You could have a conversation with Matt and decide, you know, how do you want to move forward? I mean, would you guys feel comfortable with that?
We're not going to change it for this school year. I mean, what's being done is being done. So I think that's a, that's a good idea is to bring this up again and hash it through again. We've all got, you know, a couple of weeks to think about it then and, you know. I just want to add, the teachers are the people in the classroom with the kids. And they're the ones that know what works best. And some of them have many years of experience. So for some bozo from Albany to be telling us we ought to do one thing and not to offend anybody, an administrator hasn't been in the classroom in quite a while, you know, handing down an edict as to what percent everything should be in a grading policy, I find that bothersome. So I like Jeff's idea. We could take it out of there. We don't want to get into the weeds and dictate numbers of tests or what percents or whatever. But we do need to have a grading policy that's meaningful because we don't want people just handing out grades so they'll look like good teachers and, which happens sometimes. And so, you know, it's a complicated issue.
There's also a policy committee meeting on the tenth before the next board meeting. So I would assume that Matt would also be there for that meeting to dialogue with the folks that are on that committee. And then I would assume at that point, they'd be reporting out anyway.
And maybe that the policy can recommend, or the policy committee can recommend maybe some different versions of this that are more universal or more, I don't want to say watered down, but just not in the weeds of the things that people are using successfully around this state that don't get to this level of shackling the educator's ability to teach in the classroom.
We can reach out to Erie One like we typically do to get sample policies.
I know it wasn't that specific in ninety-two though. When this policy was originally looked at, that I can see right here, it's a lot of those individual local ones were added later.
Which is, I mean, Jeannie was the, Jeannie Dangle was the superintendent at the time. And she obviously wanted something. She put a committee together and this is what came back with and this is what the board approved. So the superintendent at that time and the board members at that time, this is what they wanted. This is what was approved. Now we have it. We found this is part of, you know, circling back when a policy is made, seeing what the results are, seeing how, you know, people feel about it, you know, the teachers, you know, whether it's working for them and their subject areas. And I see this as, that's one of the nice things about doing a full policy review is having the opportunity to go through and talk about this. Maybe I hear it more because my kids are in the middle of this right now. Maybe some people don't because they don't. But it's definitely from having experience in a classroom, especially as a science teacher, the big focus of that conversation back in June was specifically the science component, especially with the new standards coming out and it is going to be more hands-on and more of like a project, more lab-type stuff. And ten percent just seems very low for the amount of effort and what these kids and teachers are going to be going through. And that just got me thinking just about other subject areas in general, tech classes, art classes, more, you know, project-based, you know, how do they run their classrooms? I mean, you can look at a science teacher, just, I'm saying that as an example, even a math teacher, and how people teach and where they put their emphasis on. You can almost say that every teacher could have their own grading policy different than their next-door neighbor. I don't think that's the right way, just my own personal opinion. The teachers may think otherwise. But I think that people in the same subject area or content area should have the same policy at least. But I'm not sure necessarily that every subject area should necessarily be the same. But that's for the teachers to decide. I just want to hear what they have to say. That's all.
I remember when we reviewed it, that's the only reason I think we accepted is because that's what we were told. A committee of teachers got together and this is what they recommended. So.
Joe, from what you said, this is a bigger conversation. What I'm hearing around the table is, is that, you know, we think that stakeholders need some input into that bigger conversation and that it's not a mid-year kind of implementation thing. So, you know, it's just a matter of kind of looking at that timeline and when is the best? And what I'm also hearing is, is that perhaps this policy isn't best for kids. So, you know, it's just kind of opening up that dialogue is what I'm hearing.
So we will review at the policy committee and Matt will be there and we'll have a conversation. And then we'll move forward with, based on the policy that comes out of that policy committee, what guidance would be for further direction and communication with staff moving forward for changes based on what's recommended. If you're getting the specifics out, then the specifics will have to go someplace at some point in time and that conversation will take place as we intended at some point with staff.
Okay.
I'm just, so before we go ahead and change the language, shouldn't we have the teachers kind of discuss what they would like to see before we go ahead and change the language?
You're telling us that this language is too specific, so why wouldn't we take the language out and then have a conversation? Conversations can start tomorrow and we can get a sense of where they're at. But from what I'm hearing from the board is that this is too specific and that that information's not going to be placed in the policy anyway, that that would be more or less placed in regulations based on conversations that administrators and committees would be having with teachers.
But at this point, it's halfway through the year. It's not going to change.
Right. It wouldn't go into effect until probably the next school year or whenever the policy was adopted.
Right. So I don't know how everybody else feels, but don't you think it would make more sense for teachers to give their input first and then bring it to the policy committee to change the language or, I don't know?
Yeah, I agree with that. It makes more sense.
You'd be looking at two things. You may be looking at actually policy and regulations.
I think where Joe's going with this is if we have an agreement that board policy level should not dictate this level of detail, let's just take it out. And then as a, as a parallel course, work with the teachers, the administration works with the teachers to come up with the lower-level regulations that then better define this. I think what I just heard Joe say and I tend to agree, let's just get the shackles off here and get all this low-level detail out of ten percent and fifteen percent because we're not going to keep it in here anyway. So getting rid of it isn't going to change a thing in the classroom tomorrow if we got rid of it today. So getting rid of it doesn't hurt anything, but it helps them now move forward as an administration and the teachers and the educators to now go formulate, what is the right way to do this? Because now we can't sit here and say, "Well, we can't do anything about it because there's a board policy restricting us to ten percent." That's gone. Let's go figure out what's right. I don't know if that's a good summary, Joe, but that's kind of what I heard and where I think this, let's just get rid of this for now so that at least people aren't being restricted by this.
I would agree with that, but if you do that and you take it all out, by next year, you have to have something new. It has to be done or there's no guidance.
I thought I heard that there are regulations that mirror this so that it can be brought down to the next level. So I don't, I thought I heard that.
Well, that would still be in place.
So even if you took this out, those regulations would still be in place.
I mean, technically, for the meantime, that could be placed in administrative, those could be placed in administrative regulations.
So that you're looking at administrative, you get people together looking at administrative regulations under that policy.
Somebody else had said this. I don't remember who. We don't, we don't want that to be under the administrative regs. We want that to come from the educators that are teaching our students.
What I heard was.
It will come from the educators, but it'll be under administrative rights of the policy.
Right. Or in other words, it'll be an administrative reg drafted with the teachers' inputs. Not, because I don't think there's anything lower than an administrative reg, right?
No, you're going to direct the superintendent of schools and or designee to develop administrative regulations based on what your policy is. That's what the role of the superintendent in cabinet level, building principals. And we're going to work with teachers to create what those recommendations would be.
Joe?
Unless, unless you're saying, because the only way, that's the only way this is ever, this is ever going to work, unless you get into the weeds and provide more specific information like you're indicating is currently in these current, this exact policy. So you're going to have to trust and hold administrators accountable to doing that work with the teachers and coming up with recommendations for the regulations, which is our role.
This should be done with a full department, every teacher involved, not just a few activist members who have strong opinions. I don't know whether it's through a department meeting or if Renee gets stuck dealing with some of this or how that works. But I want to see everybody involved in the decision-making process.
But I think as a matter of process though, just to go back to Denise, there's only two levels. There's policy and then there's administrative regs. So it has to sit in one of those two areas. So I think what we're proposing is, instead of sitting at the high-level policy level, it sits at the administrative regs, but it is written by essentially the teachers with administrative oversight or however they deem the best way to develop that is, but not to be maintained at the board level. So I think, but I'm, I think it's a technicality there. I think we're in agreement, Denise. At least I think you and I are in agreement that it shouldn't be here. It should be at the next level down, but.
Well, no, I think, I think that we should have a grading policy. I just think that we should have.
At the board level?
Broad. Yeah, I mean, it should be, it should still be a policy.
Yeah, I think we, we didn't agree to delete the whole thing, just the detailed sections of this that go down to the level.
I just want to reiterate. So I think that there should still be a policy. However, I think that we should have some input from the educators on what they want to see going forward. And then we should create, our policy committee should create some sort of language based on Erie One, you know, as our backbone, and then go from there with what they want to see.
And the, the administrative regs could actually reference, or the policy could reference the administrative regs.
When you say, I just have to get clarification for you, Denise, and you said, "See what they want to see." Who do you mean by who they want to see?
In like a committee of teachers, see what they want to see happen. So that they have some sort of voice and then have our policy, you know, written based on that.
Oh, no. Okay, I was just thinking because you said it following Erie One. And Erie One gives, you know, recommendations, but every district has the ability to not use them if they're not required by law or they can. or they can modify what's given or they can create their own, they may get their own unique to whatever the situation is at the local level for that local policy. And does, do they have a specific grading policy? Because they don't have everything. I mean, because, I mean, like this is inserted into, it's a grading policy inserted into another policy. Like, do they have something specific language of grading for us to not necessarily adopt but at least work off of and see what we want to do, how broad we want it, you know, if we want to pare it down some? I don't think that we should get into the nitty-gritty, like... I agree with Jeff. I don't think we should be saying how many tests, and I don't think that's what anyone was ever saying, how many tests go into a quarter. Or actually, maybe it was Chrissy. One of you guys said it was over on the side. That's, that's not it. You teach a unit. Some units are two weeks, some units are four weeks, some are longer. So, it just depends how many tests. I don't think we're dictating that because we don't tell the teachers how to teach or how long each unit is. But something, you know, broad, but maybe not as specific, but definitely coming from the teachers. And as a board, how are we going to, you know, make sure that that, you know, are we, if there's going to be changes at that level? I mean, we, we have a lot to talk about more than just the policy, how that's going to be handled. So, everyone has a voice with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, we'll hear something from the Board Policy Committee at the next meeting, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm, I'm sure you will. Okay, moving on.
I'd just like to plant a seed for a few, future conversation about our committees and what committees we have, what those committees' charges are. Are they still relevant and needed? Are there other committees that should be in place? This came out and, and you were there, Jen, you were there as part of the, the manual conversation. So, so I don't, I don't think that we need to have that conversation tonight, but at some point in the future, I think that it's worthwhile to reevaluate what committee, what board committees there are.
I think the way it's broken down so far, the way it's, it's a good way to break it down like where we have it in the handbook instead of standing versus ad hoc or whatever.
Yeah, you know, I, I actually started, a lot of those things that you just said, Matt, I actually started to write an email about that to kind of put it out there before we had this discussion of things. And you hit all of them, but I'm wondering if the people on the manual committee, I could email that to you guys and see if you can think of any other questions to generate a good conversation with that, get feedback and then, then send it out to everyone else. One of the questions that I have is we have four on most of our committees, except for wellness, we have two. We have four committee members on each committee, but we did tentatively write into the manual right now that any board member is welcome to come to a meeting for learning, just curious, whatever. I guess we kind of need to know, are those people like allowed to speak? We need to have like those types of conversations or are they just there as observers? How we want to run our committees. So, it's not just what committees, but how we want to run our committees as well. So, just other things to think about.
You may want to develop ground rules for committees.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
We can talk about that.
Yeah, just because that, you know, gets into, you know, whether a meeting needs to be open or not, hours are open. But, you know, you kind of get into that touchy area, right, with the quorum.
Yep.
Well, in the interest of time, you know, just people start thinking about, you know, your thoughts on that and perhaps, you know, when we have another meeting that, that kind of wraps up relatively early for us, we can have a conversation about it.
So, we're, we're moving on. Actually, head us back into an old, old meeting. So, I'm going to resolve as the Board of Education, Jern, do I need a motion? Yeah, typically had four moves. So, put in one of those four over there, guys, as they were almost like in unison. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry eight zero?